Good morning, welcome to today's Board of Franklin County Commissioners on Wednesday, May the 9th. Roll call please.
Commissioner Howard.
Present.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Present.
Commissioner Dunn.
Present.
Chair Renaud.
Present, thank you. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge allegiance followed by our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By the God we ask this morning that you will be blessed, all of those who are serving this country in a way that is a public service. Those in uniform and those behind desks, those that are making decisions, and those that are carrying out those decisions. Keep everyone safe, help us to realize that the power that you have will give us wisdom, courage, and also the knowing that we have helped others that we are responsible for. Blessed is meeting in the actions that we take, we ask in the name of your son. Amen. Okay, correspondents, Derek, anything coming up? Okay. Public comment, we have anybody signed up?
Uh, Mr. Stottemeyer.
Okay, Don?
Thirty-nine oh-three, Rock Creek Road, Rantool. Morning Commissioners, uh, just kinda come in, I heard there's been talk about trying to find some money for the preservation of the courthouse downtown, and I thought maybe I could come in and give a twenty-year history of what, short history. Twenty years ago, county commissioners actually dedicated ten percent of the sales tax they held back and was to be for preservation of the courthouse. Well, that went on and then after I started and some other commissioners started, we decided that wasn't working right, and it wasn't fair to be taking tax dollars away just to put into that fund and when the money was needed bad anyhow. So we did away with that, we brought in an architect, Mr. Don McMickin, and in two thousand and five, he worked with us to apply for the Kansas Preservation Grant, ninety thousand dollar grant, to help with the foundation around the just ground level above. We were awarded that grant, and we did do that project, and then they, we came back and then they decided to, thought they found more damage that we need to go further, so we had to go clear down eight foot deep, so we applied for another grant, and it was a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. McMickin went to, back to the state Preservation Foundation again, we was awarded another grant, and we did that. And then later on, in two thousand and six, we did another project with the bell towers and some of the roofing and some other damage down the bathrooms and stuff, they had leakages and damage, and we was awarded another ninety thousand dollar grant. And I know there is on record, not to my privy anymore, but there is documentation and records of the architect, a full book on the courthouse showing all the windows and the sizes and how many and all the documentation, so, and that money is paid through Sue McKay down in her office, it goes to a fund, the State Preservation Fund, and we haven't applied for that in ten years, over ten years now. So that might be a good idea for ya. I don't know if Don's still in business, that'd be a good person to ask, you know, don't mean you have to bring him back and hire him, but he would have all the records in his files of everything that was done and how it was done, and I know he has close ties to that committee, and that's how we got, I think the last one in Franklin County was awarded was to a school by Wellsville, a country, an old school, they got the last, but we're the only entity to ever get three of those preservation grants in the state of Kansas, so, and it's been ten years, so you may have a shot at it again, and so I'd recommend maybe to contact him or look into your records, and that may be a good way to come up with the money. And like I said, it's money you collect right here in Kansas and the courthouse down here and send to the state to go into this fund, so, I think Roy was just kinda on the tail end of that, and when we did that, so, and it worked out very well, and we did like a half a million dollars worth of work, and majority of it was paid through the grant, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. On our consent agenda item today, we had to consider and approve the county commission meeting minutes for May 2nd, and consider and approve tax change orders in the amount of a negative three thousand twenty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. Need a motion for the consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Commissioner Dunn.
Standing on the May 2nd meeting and yes on the second item.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Chair Renaud.
Yes. Okay, our first item of business is the installation of an alternative emergency exit door between the Extension Office and Health Department. Derek?
Yeah, here a couple months ago, Joy was approached by the Extension Office regarding a second door out of their suite there. Apparently, the only door in that suite leads to the hallway, and some concerns were raised about, you know, if there's a fire in the building or if there's some kind of active shooter situation, where would they go? And so I requested that they be placed on an agenda and come talk to you all directly about it. The cost is about twelve hundred dollars, the same contractor that's currently renovating the Health Department could do it, but certainly since we're modifying a building potentially, I wanted to get the board's opinion on that. It's, most of our suites have a second exit, but not all of them, so there are other suites in this building, but I believe they have representatives here today if you would like to talk with them directly, and I think they would be in a better position to tell you what their thoughts are than I, so if you wanna come up.
Somebody be the brave spokesperson to come up here and talk to us, huh?
Good morning, I'm Fran Richmond, the Director of the Frontier District, and of course with me is Rebecca McFarland and Darren Hibden, who are housed here in the office in the Annex. And as Derek said, we have been concerned sometime about the fact that we don't have a back door or emergency exit, and then we did have an active shooter training that pointed out the fact that we don't have a back door, and if there was an emergency situation, fire, whatever, that would be very handy to have. And then of course, when the Health Office started their renovation, we thought that might be an opportunity to have an emergency door, but it does connect with the Health Office, not out in the back. And so we're here to ask if we could indeed put in the second exit and draft an agreement with the Health Department on the use of that, and see what your thoughts were, I don't know if Rebecca or Darren have other thoughts that they have, or you have questions of us, we'd try to answer.
Where is this door actually gonna go out into, into the other hallway?
No, it would go into the Health Department, which is why...
Just into the Health Department and then?
Yeah, and I think that's the only way, I mean, we'd rather go that way than try to get into Community Corrections probably. I talked to Midge, she doesn't have an issue with it. I do think there would need to be some HIPAA safeguards in place, which is why, I'm not sure who drafted this agreement, I haven't reviewed it yet, but it does mention HIPAA, and I would certainly refine this to a large degree before it was executed, but that would be my only concern, but if we have an agreement that details that, and as long as the Extension Office is in there, I mean, we've got a good relationship with them, not a concern. Now, when other tenants, if we ever had another tenant, we would have to revisit, but the agreement can speak to all of that, so...
Am I correct that that was a recommendation from the active shooter training, the incident that they thought of?
They pointed out the fact that we didn't have a good back door.
My next question then Derek is, for the Health Department, would it benefit them to have another exit out?
Well, they have another exit.
Yeah, but I just didn't know if that would still be a benefit to them or not possibly or not.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, I think in an active shooter situation, my understanding is you're just told to run and some multiple exits, and even in a fire, I suppose, I mean, Commissioner Oglesby, you could comment on that, but I suspect another exit wouldn't be a bad thing, but...
Well, if it's only an emergency exit, the chances are it's never gonna be used.
Yeah.
Or that'd be the hope.
That is our hope.
Right, that we would never have to use it anyway.
Our hope.
Okay. Anybody else comment, has questions?
My question, I guess, is the one at the Health Department goes directly outside on the east side of the building then, correct?
I believe so, yes.
So it's like a steel door or something that's there? And we're talking about, I mean, I see the price for the door, and I don't know what the Extension Office has envisioned there, but are we talking just the door, are we talking exit light, what, fire-rated door, or, I mean, there's a lot of, I don't know what you're looking at.
I believe you have the bid for the door, does that...
It just says that it's provided an opening in the wall to provide a three-by-seven door, doesn't say any type of particular door.
Yeah.
And I don't know that it would need to be a steel, I mean, not a steel door.
Well, no, but you can have a wood-rated door and have fire-rated, I mean, that's just, there's, it didn't look like there was a lot of information in the bid, but...
Yeah, and I don't have the specs in front of me, but certainly, we would obviously make sure it was compliant with any fire codes and...
They're still remodeling, aren't they?
They are.
The inspector will be there and he'll check it out anyway.
And you're within your price range to approve the cost anyway.
Yeah, and this is, yeah, the only reason I brought this to you all is because we're modifying a structure that you all oversee, I mean, the price isn't an issue, it's not, I mean, I do think it makes the suite more desirable, we, the Annex Fund is, can obviously cover this, so I don't have concerns, and we can work with the contractor to make sure that this has the appropriate lighting and fire rating and all of that, so...
Right. Okay.
Is it three foot wide, is it wide enough for wheelchair?
I don't...
Is it a bit, uh...
Yeah, I could say thirty-six, thirty-six inches would be more than standard for most of them, thirty-two or thirty-four, I think.
It ends up being a thirty-two.
Yeah.
I believe that's the same size as the doors it would take to get down the hallway or into that room as well, so...
Okay. Do you need a motion on that?
I don't know, I can authorize...
Okay, well, I think the consensus of the commission seems like everybody's nodding their heads, that okay to do that, yeah, go ahead Derek and proceed with that, and we certainly appreciate that 'cause your safety is obviously very important.
We certainly appreciate your time and consideration and approval, thank you.
Okay. Next item then, Mr. Walrod, the approval rezoning application eighteen oh-three fifteen seventy-three.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The matter I have first this morning is the consideration for the rezoning of twenty acres from an A2, a Transitional Agricultural Zoning District, to the RE Residential Estate Zoning District. This matter was heard by the Planning Commission at their regular meeting in April of this year, and they have unanimously forwarded a recommendation to the county commissioners for the approval of this rezoning request. We did give adequate notice on this matter, and one of the purposes for the Land Division was to allow for the sale of approximately fifteen acres of the twenty-acre tract. The applicant has a home on the remainder, and they intend to keep that, but the larger tract now will be acquired by the property owner that's adjacent to the east and to the north, whether that's done through a boundary line adjustment or whether they choose to have it as a separate parcel. Any event, as it's currently designed, it will satisfy the county's subdivision regulations as well as all of the requirements of our comprehensive plan and our zoning, and therefore our staff would urge you to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and rezone this property, the twenty acres from the A2 to the RE Residential Estate. There's a copy of the survey attached as a part of your staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions?
It's pretty cut and dry, and we do have done numerous ones of these, so, no question, I'd make a motion to we approve the rezoning application eighteen zero-three fifteen seventy-three, rezone the twenty acres from an A2 to a RE.
Commissioner Waymeyer.
Yes.
Commissioner Howard.
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Chair Renaud.
Yes, and then that would be Resolution eighteen twenty on that one. Okay, our next item on there is to consider for approval, special use permit application, eighteen oh-three fifteen seventy-two, to Midstates Material, the operation of a rock quarry in an A1 district. All right?
As you've indicated, Mr. Chairman, this is a request for a special use permit for the operation of a rock quarry. I think most of you are aware of where this property is located, but it's south of the city of Princeton, just west of Highway fifty-nine, and on the north side of Ellis Terrace. Currently, there is another quarry that has been in operation over the years, that's located on the east side of fifty-nine highway in the same general location. The applicant is present, so if you have additional questions beyond what's in your, contained in your staff report and the recommendation of the Planning Commission, they are here to respond to those. We did give notice to thirteen surrounding property owners, and in addition, we did specifically request comments from the Public Works Director, the County Sanitarian, KDOT, the Kansas State Conservation Commission regarding the reclamation, and the Emergency Management Department for the county, as well as the city of Princeton. The properties that were notified, I think, had a pretty unanimous appearance, no one spoke for or against, but particularly against this because the original application that had been submitted contained, in addition to the rock quarry, a consideration for an asphalt batch plant. The applicants, after reviewing this with the individual property owners in that vicinity, chose to withdraw that, and the Planning Commission accepted that as a part of the action because the original application for the special use permit did request both the asphalt batch plant and the rock quarry, but they withdrew that portion of the application for the asphalt batch plant, and that seemed to satisfy the parties that were here that evening because none of them spoke against the operation of the rock quarry. The only person that did have any questions regarding this was the district engineer for KDOT, come up from Chanute, he was concerned about the possibility of blasting and access from the quarry out to fifty-nine highway, but after reviewing the plans, and more specifically the presentation that was presented by the applicants, he was generally satisfied that this was consistent with the acceptance of KDOT as far as the operation of a rock quarry in that particular location. After reviewing this in accordance with the provisions of our zoning regulations, the Planning Commission found that it was consistent with the requirements of our zoning, the county comprehensive plan, and therefore have submitted a recommendation to you for the approval of this operation of the special use permit for a rock quarry, subject to the fifteen conditions that are imposed and are contained in the draft resolution that you have as part of your staff report. Again, it was a unanimous recommendation from those members of the Planning Commission present, and we would ask that the county commissioners accept the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the special use permit as presented this morning. And as I indicated earlier, the applicant's representatives are here, I think that they do have some additional information they'd like to share with you.
Okay, questions?
I just have one question on number fifteen, the special use permit should run with the land and maybe transferred, subject to, if that property sells to another owner, we wouldn't look at that special use permit again? It would go along with...
The only way, and we always have the opportunity, the only way we would look at it is if there were a complaint, we verified that there was a complaint, that they weren't in compliance with the operating conditions that were imposed, that would be the only way that it would really come back to the Planning Commission. Regardless of who the operator is, the property owner is still the property owner, this is just a lease, so these things do change hands, I won't say all that frequently, but they do, in terms of their operations, we've seen a number of different operators in some of the quarries that we have here in Franklin County, but the special use permit stays with the land regardless of the operator.
What water source were they gonna use?
This is in the rural water district, most of the water that they're gonna be using is not going to be for domestic purposes, but it's gonna be used for dust control. They are, the applicants here can respond more specifically to that, Roy.
I didn't know what the source was for water.
Well, the source would be that they would have to get a meter if they're having any real domestic purpose for that, in this case, they're using porta-potties because their operation is such that it's on a, there are certain phases of this that they're doing as part of their operation. First, you're removing...
The water I was talking about is for washing the rock, that source of water. I don't know if there's a water source there or not.
They have onsite capabilities for that, there's two ponds that are currently on this, one part of it being the old quarry that was in operation quite a number of years ago, if you look at the aerial photo, you'll see that there are some water bodies on the property, and those are in part, one because there's a drainage that comes into the property at the southeast corner of the site, and the other is a pond that was created or water body that was created by the extraction of the rock that they did previously when it was in operation as a rock quarry. The applicants are here though and can respond more specifically to that.
Thank you Commissioners, my name's Brad Finkel, I'm an attorney with Stevenson Brand and represent Midstates, and this is Cole Anderson, Director of Operations for Midstates. We have a little presentation that we gave at the Planning Commission, we'll go through it really quite quick for you by answering your questions, but I'll let Cole answer the question on the water first.
Yeah, so we'd use probably the sediment ponds onsite, so before like any water would discharge from the site, they go through sediment ponds to let fines settle out, so we discharge clean water. We pull all our dust control water from those, so...
Okay. Just real quick, I'll run through this presentation, again, I think we have a lot of support from the, or at least no opposition from the neighbors. Property owners are also here for this lease, but pretty quickly, Midstates Material is a locally owned operation based in DePica, they have sites all over around this area, Kansas, Missouri, Oklahoma, of course, they have another one here in Franklin County as well. Obviously, we're here to get the special use permit approved, and we did take the batch plant out. Again, the main purpose of this quarry is to serve the southern part of the county and some of the counties to the south, in particular Coffey and Anderson and Lynn County, there's a pretty good demand for rock throughout this county, and we're trying to serve that demand. This picture isn't all that great because of the light, I don't know if we can turn the light out, might make it look a little better. It is, so here's fifty-nine, this is the pit, the existing quarry across the road, this is the property in question, this used to be a quarry pit, of course, as you can see, has water in it and a secondary pond, and so all the access will be as part of, you'll see in the conditions, there's actually a little bridge right there which we will not cross because it doesn't have the weight-bearing capabilities, but we'll come out of the property straight to the highway, very short distance, and very good access obviously to a major highway in a place that's already had a quarry before, so we think it's a great location, and we know the rock is good. Obviously, we got approval from the staff report, and again, not gonna walk through all of that, but each of the findings, both the regular findings and the golden factors, the staff found and the Planning Commission found, in our favor. Obviously, we have the various conditions that you talked about, again, it's, although the entire site is slightly larger, the actual SUP will be the forty-six acres, we'll have all the mitigation, we have all, like you said, the fencing, the hours of operation setbacks, all those things. Again, this is the quarry across the street, and something we hope to do a little better on, and what Midstates does is, of course, you know what reclamation is, but Midstates does a great job of reclaiming as they go, and they will post the bond and they develop a reclamation plan, and as shown here, they've won the, three times, including two thousand and eighteen, three of the last six years, they've won the Governor's Award for Reclamation, and it's something they're proud of, and it's something they plan to use on this site. And so, we think they're a good operator, we think it's a good location, I think it's gonna be good for the county and good for those who use it, and we'd be happy to answer your questions. Oh yeah, do you want to show, yeah, we can show this quick video, it's pretty cool.
Our goal is to leave the land aesthetically pleasing, but for the land to also have a meaning for the future generations. The Big Springs Quarry is a two thousand acre surface quarry that has several different We just finished our third phase and completed the full reclamation of that phase. Once we extract the limestone, we try and backfill and reclaim as we go. At the end of mining, we then grade the layout of the land and spread topsoil and seed. We're really excited to show the after product of mining responsibly. Our goal in reclamation is to put the ground back even better than what it was when we We've planted nine hundred trees for quail and pheasant, stocked over a hundred thousand fish, and spent over ten thousand man-hours reclaiming the Big Springs Quarry. It takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of time and a great plan, but look what we can put back after we mine responsibly. It takes a lot of effort, it takes a lot of time and a great plan, but look what we can put back after we mine responsibly.
And that's a hundred and eighty? How big is that?
That reclamation was over two hundred acres.
Twenty, obviously a lot bigger than what we're talking about here. But it's an ongoing operation in Douglas County, so again, those are reclamations they do as they as they go along, making the land better as they pull it out. And that's certainly what we'd see here. We'd start where that pit was, get some more out of that and then move on and reclaim as we move through the property.
How deep's the rock?
How deep is the rock?
Thirty foot. So there'd be a lot of overburden to get to the rock.
Okay, questions?
If you have no further questions, we would ask that you accept the planning commission's recommendation and approve the resolution along with the fifteen conditions for the approval of the special use permit.
That'd be a resolution eighteen twenty-one.
I'd make a motion to approve special use permit application eighteen oh three dash fifteen seventy-two for Midstates Material LLC for the operation of a rock quarry in an A-one agricultural zoning district based on the findings and subject to the fifteen conditions cited in the attached resolution.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
And thank you, Midstates. We look forward to having that process take place and add to the county. Okay, the next agenda item considered for approval, awarding the salt bid to Central Salt LLC.
Yes. Douglas County takes salt bids for themselves as well as other agencies. Those agencies are listed on the bid form, include Franklin County, the city of Ottawa, Baldwin, LaCompton, Lawrence, et cetera. Got bids from seven other agencies and the low bidder this year was Central Salt. They also won in fifteen, sixteen and seventeen. Twelve hundred tons at fifty-two sixty-seven a ton for a total price of sixty-three two oh four. Obviously, this is a product that we need, so if you don't have any questions, I would request a motion in favor of that.
About worth it from last year, Derek. Are we close to the same, pretty much?
I honestly, Commissioner Howard, I don't-
No, I just, it's not much higher.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, but I don't think salt has been, I don't think there's been a large increase in that.
There's no question this has saved us a lot of money by going in with Douglas County on this, so. If they bring that to us, we have to go out there and get it. I assume it's delivered, probably.
I think it's delivered. I pay a salt company when they-
Okay, I think that's probably a deliberate cost, yeah. And then those other entities, they come and pick it up, whatever they're going to get and pay for. So that cost, it's not all that's the total bid, right?
Yes.
So some of that cost will be sold back out.
That's right.
Okay. Okay, gentlemen?
I make a motion to approve awarding the salt bid to Central Salt LLC in the amount of sixty-three thousand, two hundred and four dollars.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Chair Renaud?
Yes.
Okay, staff reports. Derek?
I don't believe I have anything for you all today.
Dustin? In the clerk's office, okay. Commissioner comments? How about Roy? Roy, tell us about your meeting.
Yeah, last week I went to the Kansas County Commission conference down in Wichita, Kansas, and these conferences are pretty pretty interesting. We had several subjects that talked about, one of the big items is not necessarily in our area, but western Kansas is immigration, immigration law. And Garden City, Dodge City and Liberal, they formed a kind of a consortium to deal with the over six thousand immigrants who work mainly in the meatpacking industry and after going through what it is to be an immigrant, all the rules and regulations and all the different categories of immigration, it's probably a pretty lucrative business for lawyer, immigration lawyer to try to keep the immigrants in compliance with our immigration laws. I didn't realize after nineteen eighty-six that all hirers have to fill out an immigration form. I don't know if our HR person does that. Form four ninety-nine, I never even heard of it before, but anyway, everyone that is a hire now has to have an immigration form. So anyway, that's what we do on immigration. Another subject was cybersecurity and I guess K-Camp has a capability or understanding with cybersecurity, so if we have any problems with cybersecurity, we call K-Camp and they can help us take care of that situation. We visited the Lincoln County Nylander case again and we had the lawyer that represented the deputy sheriff that the commissioners wanted to to remove and it was kinda interesting. Every time I hear about this case, I learn more about it and anyway, the according to this lawyer, I'm taking it from his perspective, that this deputy sheriff was doing his job too good and the commissioners were getting a lot of complaints that from the community, so they wanted, basically commissioners wanted him to back off his doing his job and sheriff said, no, he's my responsibility, I'm not gonna fire him and that's kinda how this case got completely too hard at Kansas Supreme Court and they they ruled that there are constitutional rights and there are statutory rights and all county governments are under statutory rights and and this was a violation of statutory rights. It wasn't under the county commissions to regulate other elected officials, basically. And it was interesting, this case keeps coming up all the time and rehashed and and we went over that, so pretty interesting. Another interesting thing was demographics of taxation report. I think we get these occasionally. Anyway, it's interesting when you look through that, how our taxes are arrived at and Johnson County was the least ad valorem taxes, it was under nineteen mills and the highest county was a hundred and forty-five mills. We're about in the middle, we're about sixty mills for about thirty-seven counties in that category. When you look at Johnson County, their valuation was almost ten billion dollars, so a mill in Johnson County would bring in a heck of a lot of money compared to out western Kansas, some of those, that's where their mill level was, the high was a hundred and forty-five mills. And I got all the demographics here and we're kinda right in the middle of what we're at. I'm gonna give all this to Derek so he has something to read on the way out to Colorado.
All right.
Read all this stuff. That's all I had on that conference, it was a good conference and well attended.
Okay, good. Anything else and-
I went I went to the first Friday forum there last Friday and our health department pretty much gave the gave the presentation on opioid crisis and and that sort of thing, so it was something we all have to be concerned about.
Monday night, I attended the Princeton City Council meeting and they had a very long discussion as they were approached by their rec committee. They wanna annex their ball diamonds into the city so that they can build a new concession stand and bathroom. They didn't wanna build it in where they're currently at in the county, under the county's code and pay our building permit fees. But they have some issues to address whether or not they could tap the current sewer line that is close by because they want them on city services for city water and city sewer. And they weren't sure how that was gonna go down. Yeah, so there's, the rec center will be the ones that will have to petition city of Princeton to be annexed and and then brought back for them to vote on. They did their insurance, their annual insurance renewals. Of course, there was an increased cost. They had some, a lot of discussion about city maintenance issues around town. They are in the process of trying to build a new park next to city hall and how they can outfit that. They have some equipment and how they're gonna lay it out. And they've also applied for the pathways grant and through the health department to try to get some additional funding. And they've got some feedback from the health department on some things to make their grant better and and they're gonna try to address those and send that back. And then they had a seems like a pretty frequent discussion in Princeton maybe other communities as well about houses that have a lot of trash and junk and how they can address this and one house in particular, they actually thought maybe it might be good if someone from the health department actually came down and looked at it. They also had a discussion then about trying to look at issuing permits for four-wheelers to operate within the city of Princeton. I guess somebody had seen this somewhere else and thought it might be a source of revenue, so. And then I was at yesterday's Ottawa Chamber of Commerce board meeting. They are looking at about seventy people or seventy vendors for their flea junk and trunk that's coming up. They look like that's gonna go maybe Clearfield Fifth Street is the intent and they're gonna be marking spaces soon. They also talked about that they are, the executive committee of the chamber met with the executive committee of Main Street and they're trying to work out some details about efforts to not duplicate things and work together on a lot of projects so that they can properly staff these events and so that, you know, it's not a burdensome thing on one department when everybody's benefiting. So there was some good news there. They possibly have a renter for the upstairs, which is also good and will be a good addition to our community as well. And then we got an update from Onward Ottawa as well. A considerable amount of money has already been pledged for the project, it looks like. And they've skipped the idea of looking at phase two, they're kind of a phase one, go to phase three now. And how they might be able to do that and what might take place and they're still looking for people that might open doors for them to potential donors, but they are making some significant headway on the project, it looks like, so.
I went to Williamsburg City Council meeting Monday night. They had a engineer from the company that's doing their sewer project was there to give them an update. Basically, they're finishing it up, just got a lot of cleanup and that type of work left. They hope to be done by the end of the month and be out of Williamsburg. They had an update on their senior housing project. They went over their yearly appointments. Talked about the budget a little bit. Also talked about the streets and how much money they had in their street fund and they've been holding off on the streets till the sewer project was done, so they talked a little bit about getting started fixing the streets up once they, that company is gone. Talked about Jayhawk days a little bit and that was it. And that's all I've been to.
Hospital meetings next week?
Okay. I went to Rancho City meeting Monday night. Their vet clinic will be May the twenty-third from four to six P.M. for their citizens in the town to come down to city hall and get their dogs vaccinated. Their mayor apparently is on some medical leave right now and so the vice chair, vice pro temp, whatever he is, handled the meeting. They did hire a city attorney, or at least a new one, and the city attorney was there to help with that. Sheriff's deputy happened to be at our meeting again and I think that's a plus for that community. They talked a little bit about their Fourth of July and the money being spent on that versus using it for something else and a lot of community pride felt that that was an event that they apparently they put on quite a fireworks display. I think it's like a week before the Fourth, but whenever they do it, they said there's about eight hundred to a thousand people come into town for that, so apparently it's a very good one. And other than that, that covered their business, so. Nothing else? Not planning on a study session probably Monday or whatever. We'll just wait and see what happens and go from there.
Yeah, I when we talked with staff about me being out next week, I told them if they had anything urgent to get it to me and maybe we could get it on today. Didn't receive anything and so at this juncture, I don't think we'll need a study session or a meeting next week. So it might be the week after before we, and obviously that's your call, Commissioner Renaud. But if you wanna make that call now, we can plan on.
Well, yeah, unless Joy or somebody, Janet can always say, hey, look, this needs to be done and we'll have a meeting. Otherwise, right now, I'd say we're not meeting Monday for sure and looks like not on Wednesday either and I'll not expect that unless something comes up important that they tell us we need to do.
Perfect.
We know when we're gonna be doing budget. What periods of time to kinda plan off?
Joy, do you know that date off the top of your head when the meetings with the board are for the budget?
What was that date then?
June eleventh through fourteenth.
Okay, that week, all right. Okay. See, the Friday before that is our appreciation thing, if I remember right. Yeah, okay. Gotta keep that week there then, okay? Sounds good. If there's nothing else, then I'll consider a motion for adjournment.
Make the motion. So.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.